Yeah, we have an office.
That's okay. We're good. That's okay. Okay, I'd like to call the November 10th, 2025 Peachtree City Planning Commission meeting to order. If all those in attendance, citizens of the United States, please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Like to welcome everyone this evening. And I have to say whoever decided to turn the heat off, please turn it back on. It's a little chilly out there and that's actually coming from someone who's originally from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, so I don't like the cold weather anymore, so. There you go. Okay, announcements, staff, any announcements this evening?
No, sir, nothing.
Okay. Presentations?
No, sir.
Nothing? Okay. Any agenda changes?
No, sir.
Great, okay. So we have the minutes from the October 13th, 2025 Planning Commission. Hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at those. Any comments, changes, omissions to those? No? If we have none, then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? No? Okay, if that's the case, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted for October 13th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved as submitted. Okay. Old agenda items. Nothing? Okay, so we're going to roll right into the new agenda items for this evening. The first is building elevations, White Oak Dental, 500 Stevens entry, and I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Okay, so the, these elevations are what's being proposed for the children's, the pediatric dental office that'll be located, as you said, 500 Stevens entry. This is the zoning map, it's zoned LUC 25. If you may recall, they were just in here not too long ago for their conceptual site plan. There's two lots here, and the lot in question that we're dealing with tonight is here in the back. Here is the colored elevations that are being proposed, and the, the land development ordinance, that's a mouthful usually, establishes general goals for architectural design. Design of all structures should be unobtrusive, an unobtrusive design, material and color that blend harmoniously with the natural surroundings, and also surrounding development. As a general rule, front facade should be at least 80% primary materials such as brick and stone, and side facade should be at least 50%. So the intent, per the architects, they say the intent of this building is to create a welcoming farmhouse feel that suggests a home more than an office, in hopes that this will calm anxious children as they come for their dental appointments. So this proposal includes fiber cement board and battened siding with a brick-water table, as you can see here, that is on all sides of the building, all four sides, and a metal roof is also being proposed. So the fiber cement is similar to brick and stone in that it's a durable, low-maintenance material, and, as well as long-lasting. And with that, taking that into consideration, the material, there would be 100% primary materials on all four sides of the building. The actual amount of brick is 19% on the entrance side of the building, which is this one right here, and then the rear of the building, the other long side, 27%. The side that faces Stevens entry, 27%, and that is this side of the building right here, and then the opposite side at 29%. The land development ordinance establishes guideline for colors. They should be low reflectance, subtle, neutral, or earth tones. And here is the color palette and materials that are being proposed. The board and battened siding, right here, is proposed to be Sherwin-Williams Alabaster, which is described as a soft, warm, but balanced white. The water table is a Cherokee, by Cherokee Brick, called Oxford. It's got a deep brown base with variations in tones. The metal windows and door frames will be black anodized aluminum. There are some timber brackets being proposed, all these, sorry, there we go. All these right here are timber brackets to add to that farmhouse look. They'll be stained with a dark oak stain, and then the roofing, the preferred color is galvalume, which is, whoops, sorry, wrong direction, is this, this gray color, and then as an alternate, if you care to discuss or prefer, is this charcoal gray color. In your packet, I forgot to include it in the presentation, in your packet is a photo of the adjacent building. It's very similar in colors, and so staff feels the palette is neutral and the colors and materials complement the neighboring building, therefore meeting the requirements of the land disturbance, oh, it's land, land development ordinance, excuse me.
Could you go back one slide?
Yes, I can. There you go. And the applicant is also here.
Yeah.
To answer your questions.
Perfect. I'm going to go ahead and, if the applicant can represent, please come up to the microphone and state your name and who you represent.
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Jim Bergen with HDA Architects, and we represent the Architectural Record for this project and for Dr. Popple.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it up. Let me ask, anything else to add to staff's presentation?
Laura pretty much nailed it. We really just want to create a very, almost like a home, I don't want to say residential, but a home feel for the, to make the child feel more comfortable. We also wanted to make sure we complemented the building that's adjacent to us. We didn't want to come in and create this, you know, imposing building that wasn't consistent with the development, so we felt like with this combination, we were very close to complementing what was already there. And again, just trying to make it, just a building that will pop, but will serve a purpose of calming the children.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up for questions to start, and I'm going to go ahead and start with Commissioner Allen.
All right, the only question I have, because this looks really nice, is on the description up here, the colors, you have like a green or a brown option, and then on the, can you go back to the last slide, please, Laura? On that one, you show a gray, light gray, dark gray as options for the roof.
Yeah, so I think that the printing might be a little bit off. I, we do have some samples of the metal roof up front, if you want me to bring them to you.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Yes, please.
You may, absolutely. So this is the owner's preferred selection.
All right.
Right here. That is called galvalume, is a standing C metal roof. If that is, becomes a question, we've had this conversation, we are, we would be willing to also do what is called the charcoal gray.
Go ahead and lift up the brick sample so they can see it as well.
And this is, this is the, the brick to be, can be used, and I'm dropping, and this is the water sample, which is kind of just a visual type.
Yeah.
And then this is just to represent the black aluminum that the window storefront window frames will be, and then this is alabaster.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
If I had my preference, I'd go with charcoal gray, but I don't own the building. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
My preference would be the charcoal gray as well. Yeah.
I think it makes it look less like of a warehouse and more of a home.
Yeah.
Sure.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Allen? Commissioner Gant, any questions? Commissioner Criss, questions?
Yeah, just a question for staff. I think this looks great. How come we haven't defined the fiber cement as a primary material? Just out of curiosity, is that something that we can do in the UDO?
Absolutely.
Because I think it looks really nice in this design, and, you know, to your point that you put in the materials, it's very durable and long-lasting, so I think it's something that we should consider as we continue to take a look at the UDO, because I think this is, you know, if you, if you look at the percentages here, you know, I'm not sure that they actually meet what's required under the ordinance, but I think it looks fantastic, so I think we should probably consider changing that, so.
So if I can ask something, Commissioner, I think one of the things that I would encourage is that where you're seeing areas that need enhancements.
Yeah.
Our code can be slightly dated a little on some things, so that if you see things that would enhance improving that beautification that you're looking for, just note that, and we'll make sure we look into that.
Yeah, I'll pass it along to Ken, too, but yeah, no questions about this particular project. Yeah.
Commissioner Halverson, any questions?
It looks good. I like the scale, she did a good job of breaking that down. The only question I have, well, I'll agree with the rest of my commissioners, that the darker roof, as you have it rendered, is probably the best palette. The only question I have is lighting. I noticed you don't have any lighting on the building.
There will be some downward, there are some scottises that go along the veranda building, I think they're every 12 feet, and they will, they project down the face of the building.
Okay.
So there's nothing that faces up for the parking lot, or nothing that faces up, faces down for the face of the building.
Great. Just want you to kind of focus on the entrance, because at night, those kind of things, but other than that, looks good.
Commissioner Halverson, any other comments?
No, sir.
Commissioner Criss, any other comments?
That was great.
Commissioner Allen, comments?
Nothing to add.
Commissioner Gant?
Well done, thank you.
And overall, I think it looks really good, especially where it's going to be sitting back kind of in the woods a bit, and I think it's complementary to the, you know, the existing building that's adjacent to it. I tend to agree. I think the charcoal gray would probably look a bit better than just the straight aluminum kind of color. Yes, please come up to the microphone and give your name.
Ben Popple, owner.
Sure.
Eventually. Charcoal gray it is.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben.
It's just the suggestion, you know, but I think.
Good point.
Yeah, I think it's going to give it a better, I think we all have consensus, it's going to give it a bit better look to it, so.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you.
Absolutely appreciate you guys.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll move to approve the building elevations for White Oak Dental at 500 Stevens entry.
I'll second.
Okay. I guess, do we need to document the suggestion for the charcoal?
I would.
Okay, so could we?
With the condition that the charcoal gray color be used for the roofing material.
Okay. And do we have a second on the?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to approve the building elevations, White Oak Dental, 500 Stevens entry, with the condition that the standing C metal roof be of the charcoal gray. We have a second. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay. If none, all those in favor of approving the building elevations, White Oak Dental, 500 Stevens entry, with the condition, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Building elevation, White Oak Dental, 500 Stevens entry, approved with condition. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have building elevation modifications, Royal Condos 215 North Lake Drive, and turn it back to staff.
All right, so the architect has, coming to us with some proposed modifications for colors and materials for the mixed-use development at North Lake Drive, and the modification being requested due to an issue with availability of materials. You may recall, well, this was originally approved, I believe was back in, I don't know, it was either 2020, 2022, and then in 2023, they modified the design and that was approved. And now, they are again coming to us because of issues with availability. So the percentage of primary materials will remain the same, and the proposed colors are similar, very similar, still neutral, like I said, similar to the shades that were approved in 2023. Sorry, here's the property zoned LUC 34. And this is a comparison of the colors that were approved in 2023, direct comparison to the colors being proposed now, so you'll see there's a change in the color of the siding, but still very similar, both of these. This, well, this is kind of hard to see up here, and it, again, this is almost identical. And then there's a change, well, the brick, I think it's a new manufacturer perhaps, and, but almost an identical color, and the biggest change is probably this stone here, and you do have all of the, the materials for brick and the stone down here in front of you. And then they provided some updated renderings for you to see, so this is the area with the new stone, the darker, the dark brick, and this metal colors in here, the bronze metal colors. And that is all.
Okay, great, thank you, staff. Do we have the applicant or applicant representative? Please come up to the microphone and state your name and who you represent.
Jefferson Brown, Jefferson Architecture, owner. Same type of thing, we were here last week, or last month about availability of materials, we're doing the best we can to minimize the differentials because of all the prior approvals. So we do have samples in front of you, and hopefully you agree that they are similar.
Great. Okay, I'm going to turn it over for questions. Commissioner Halverson, any questions of staff or the applicant?
I'm at a disadvantage, partially because it was already approved previously, so it's difficult for me to kind of express my personal opinion on the design. If I were to just look at the material change, I would say it's close to what you had before, and I understand you had.
Correct.
The challenge.
Thank you.
Commissioner Criss, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Allen, any questions?
I do, can we go to the rendering? And this is for my own edification more than a, it was my original understanding that the, and we discussed this earlier amongst ourselves, and I think I might have been wrong now looking at the renderings, that it was going to be apartments, condos up top with businesses on the bottom. These look more like garages on the bottom, so is, for example, the unit in front of the truck, is that all one unit, or is there a business on the floor level and living space up top?
On these renderings, they're really not the best of the rendering package that we had. Those are retail on the lower level. There is a balcony walkway that projects forward towards you, and then the condo unit is actually pushed back, so it creates a access walkway across the front of this one.
But it is all multi-use rather than just residential?
No change at all to the previous approval, and all this plan reflects all the negotiation and the things that the city wanted. We're not changing any of those.
And again, it was only for my, I wasn't on the board when it was done, it was just my edification. Thank you. I have no questions.
I believe these are the garages, is that right, Jefferson? This is the back.
The tops of the garages that are at the rear.
Thank you very much.
Good. Commissioner Gant, any questions?
Just a clarification, I'm assuming no other design changes other than material.
That is correct.
I'm going to stay with you, any comments? Commissioner Allen, any comments?
No further questions or comments.
Commissioner Criss?
Appreciate you coming back to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Halverson, any?
Note the comments.
And, yeah, definitely understand, you know, availability of materials, you know, especially over the time. I think they're very, very similar, and I think it's a good substitution from what you presented, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the building elevation modifications, Royal Condos 215 North Lake Drive?
I'll make it, I would like to make a motion that we approve the elevation changes as requested of the Royal Condos at 215 North Lake Drive.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the building elevation modifications, Royal Condos 215 North Lake Drive, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the building elevation modifications, Royal Condos 215 North Lake Drive, approved as submitted.
One last question, just, when do you think they'll be done? Months or months?
Put the man on the spot.
Off the record?
Yeah, that's why I asked after the fact.
The construction schedule I saw is showing 14 months.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, and the last new agenda item is the building elevation modifications, NCR 200 Highway 74 South. Turn it back to staff.
All right, so this is, this is a proposal for an existing industrial property, some exciting upgrades that are being proposed. The project site is located along Highway 74. It does have two separate parcels, and while we're, the address is 200 South Highway 74, this is actually the portion of the building that is not affected by this proposal, and all the, you'll see, all of the proposals are up on this parcel right here. So just to point out, just to give you sort of a reference, as far as visibility, this is the views of the property in the winter, when some of the leaves are off the trees, and it's still not real visible except for the existing glass portion that accentuates the corner of the building. We have some images in summer, and now you can really see not much visibility except for this corner. I did want to point out, on that parcel that has the address for 200, this is another view you might be familiar with as you're going down 74. This part of the building is not part of the proposal, just wanted to make you aware of that. So these are really the only two major visible points along 74 for the building. There's some diagrams and existing pictures that the architect provided. This is a, I included this because this is a great aerial shot that, this is, this facade, so Highway 74 is out here, and this is that glass corner. This is the facade where the upgrades are being focused, right here, and then also in one spot along this side to accentuate an existing entry point. This also is to help locate you as to what we'll be looking at. This along, this is that really long side that faces Highway 74. This is the entrance where they're talking about doing some improvements. Then you can see, these are actually red lines, this is, you know, the corner they're focusing on. These are all entry points that they're upgrading, and then you see this red line goes here and all the way down this side, and this is where all the upgrades are focused. Just to point out, there's two water tanks back here that will be removed, and then when the architect comes up, they can clarify some things. I believe there's some new loading docks back, proposed for back here. So let me just step back for a minute. The... Sorry, I've lost my place. So the proposal is to basically clean and repaint the building. They'll be introducing a new corner element facing the highway, which is, this is similar to that other existing view, that's just all that old glass right here, that'll be the new look. Again, this is sort of that aerial view that shows you all of the new, where the improvements are focused, and then this view is looking from down this way back towards the front corner, and highlighting the front corner there. The proposal does include fiber cement cladding that will resemble a vintage wood and steel look, plus the new storefront windows, and the majority of the upgrades, as I've said, are focused on this north side of the building. The existing building does not contain any primary materials such as brick or stone or the fiber cement, and as I mentioned, the upgrades do include some fiber cement siding, and long-lasting, low-maintenance material, similar to brick and stone. The quantity of the proposed fiber cement is on the north facade, which is the side where things are focused, about 36%. When I give you these numbers, I don't include glass in the calculations. The east side, which is the side that faces Highway 74, will remain mostly as it is with stucco and glass, with only a new portion of fiber cement, that's about 850 square feet, which is approximately nine and a half percent along that whole side, which you saw was really long. The south side of the building will remain as is, as well as the west side, which is, I believe, metal panels and glass. Color, the colors established in the land development ordinance should be neutral or earth tones and blend with the natural surroundings and adjacent development. The proposed color panel, I'm, excuse, proposed colors, here's, by the way, this is the other, the long facade, and this is the entrance that they want to focus on, just bringing some attention to this entrance, and I'll let the architect explain the alternate proposal. This is the same, a different design for the same entrance. So material sheet here, got your fiber cement panels looking like the wood, cedar wood, and also looking like steel. The stone being proposed is not on the building, it's for some retaining walls that are existing. Metal panels painted a bronze color and also more of a black, new storefront windows, a dark color, and then, let's see, existing many, existing metal panels to be painted basically the same color that they are now, which is this light cream color. All right. Let's see. I think that about covers it. So the upgrades cover such a small portion of the building, they're not necessarily required to meet the 80% and 50% requirements that we have for new development and redevelopment. However, I did want to point out that they are choosing to introduce some primary materials where there don't exist, where they don't exist now.
Great, thank you. Have the applicant or representative?
Thank you, Jefferson.
Hello again.
Do you have any other comments?
This was kind of a tough project, and how do we approach an adaptive reuse, and knowing about the 80% overall and the 50% requirements, our approach was, just so I understand where we're coming from, where we actually made a renovation or made an improvement, we tried to adhere to the 80%, 50% rule, because we're actually only really touching, when you, where we're putting the nichihua, it's less than 15% of the total facade and width area, but that 15% of where we're touching, over 80% is actually a primary material, if you consider nichihua a primary material. And so we approached it that way, and we tried to push the client into these improvements instead of just purely painting the building, and we wanted to bring and improve that corner and the presence from that intersection, and hopefully you feel that we've done that, and with an architectural style that I think, I think it's a long-lasting style and reflects the community.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up for questions. Commissioner Criss, any questions of the applicant or staff?
I only had one question. I only had one question. If you can go to the slide with the read, the alternate design for the entrance. So I noticed that on the, on one of the sides, that's at that corner, you've got a lot of ADA-type entrance accommodations. But this one, I don't know if I see it here, it's not very ADA-friendly, right? This particular entrance, but maybe you've accounted for that elsewhere.
I can't answer that, and that's why there are two alternatives. Depending on who rents, or who they get an agreement with, they may require ADA, and they may require an elevator because of the grade change, because that accessibility that's there, that they call ADA, does not meet the ADA.
Yeah.
And there's total travel distances before you get to the next elevator, which is in the other phase. So they could hit it depending on the user. So if they contract with someone who is medical or assembly, they're going to need concept alternate proposal. In that one, there's a monument stair, but there's also an elevator. So they enter at a level of the parking, with ADA parking right in the front of that structure. So that's why we presented two, so we didn't have to come back, but you understand what we were trying to consider. We don't have a tenant. We don't have commitments to that space. So depending on the tenant, one option, the alternate would be required for ADA if medical does expand into that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just a personal preference, because of, you know, different tenants that could be either attracting the public visitors or not attracting public visitors, I think the alternate proposal is probably the better one. But they both look fine to me, as long as that's being considered, and I appreciate you explaining that.
The upper alternate, just so you know.
Yeah.
You know how there's a lot of sports training? There's a lot of sports training that happens, and they could access, they don't care. They would access at the back of the building, they can walk right in at grade. And then this just becomes the second egress within the travel distance, and it doesn't have to have an elevator, it doesn't have to have a ramp.
Got it.
Because the other exit point satisfies the ADA.
Got it, okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, nothing further.
Commissioner Halverson, any questions?
I prefer your alternate approach.
So.
Yeah. Can we go back to the primary elevation? Obviously, I appreciate what you've done relative to the hierarchy and everything else. It makes complete sense. Only question I have is, why did you choose so much black?
It's what's existing there.
Oh, is it?
On, on the frames and on the windows, and then we carried that one. Even the architectural, on that 74 side, there's a window profile that's existing. We actually matched that profile, so it didn't look like an addition.
Gotcha.
That's where it came from.
So you're just extending it, basically?
That's all we did.
Oh, okay. Then it makes complete sense. Because I'm like, that just seems odd as a primary choice, unless you were matching it.
The tenant, and there's another layer to that. The tenant that would possibly be taking that entire corner, that's their corporate colors.
Enough said. Okay, thank you for explaining that. Oh, one last question.
The building would look pretty nice, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah. On the elevation, can you go to the elevation real quick? Do you have the elevation in the presentation?
I didn't put them in. I was trying to keep this from getting so long, because the package was quite large, and it all is in your package.
It's just a nitpicky thing on my point.
I love it.
The 100 pylon in the elevation is a little bit taller than the other two? And I was wondering if that was by design?
Right there?
Uh huh.
That's actually an existing height.
Oh, is it?
So we're actually cladding over an existing element. And then, for the flashing on the backside, the warranty, it was a six-inch curb. We raised it to 12 to get the warranty. So it is actually six inches taller than what's existing.
Okay, because I could tell by the elevation.
I think he's referring to this.
That bump right there.
Right there.
See how we squared that off, instead of keeping the angle?
Yep.
So we started at the high point came across.
Okay. Could you make the others a little bit taller, too? Just make them even?
We could, but, you know, on the developer side, if it's 12 inches required and it looks okay.
I know. It's just an ask, but, okay. Thank you for answering that.
Commissioner Gant, any questions?
So, yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, let me just say, you've taken a warehouse and you've made it more appealing.
Thank you.
So I think you've done a good job in doing that. I just have some questions related to, maybe I've, maybe we've had these discussions before, but is NCR going to remain the tenant, or have they vacated the building altogether?
They're actually going to be a sub, they're actually going to lease.
They're going to lease.
They're sold, I don't know if they've closed yet, they haven't closed yet. When they close, it will have all-new ownership. NCR will remain as a tenant, and in that other piece of property, all their training, all that's going to remain, and then they're going to have some additional warehousing in this phase. But it'll be at the back where the water containers are.
Where will, looking at the site plan, where will NCR be?
I think what he's saying is they'll be down in this portion.
Down in that portion, right there.
Down here.
Remember that second entrance?
Yep, yep.
That second entrance, they have a training facility, there's a nice curved and glass reception area and elevator.
Got it.
All of that staying, that's why there's no improvements there, because they're, they're going to not own, but lease, and they'll stay there.
So you're making, this is becoming a multi-tenant building, essentially?
Potentially. And that's why, when they asked about the loading docks at the back.
Yeah, that was a big question there.
We're looking for and talking to business and medical. They want to occupy the front, they don't want to be in the core of the building, because there's no natural daylight. NCR needs some additional warehousing. If we get the tenants in the front, then NCR is going to need those proposed. We were just letting you know what was kind of in the conversation and what potentially could happen. So those parking space, those docks there, NCR may need them for their products.
So the property is currently zoned industrial or commercial?
Industrial.
So the reuse will be industrial as well, or could be commercial? Are you going to be coming back for zoning change, or?
I wouldn't rule it out, but right now we have nothing signed. You know, we just wanted to get this in front of you now and early, and just see if this is the right direction. Does this meet the city vision for that, for that corner?
I guess the only concern that I would have is, what type of future users or tenants would be there? And the quality.
I think that anything above.
So that's would be my only concern.
I will add that if the use changes, there will be an opportunity for them to have to come back for a rezoning, if that takes place. So now, I believe they're looking at the facade, the design. But the use changes, we'll address that once that business license comes in. If we identify that there's a need for a rezoning, our office will mention that, and then we'll bring that forward to you.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Well, overall, I think you've done a really good job doing this.
We appreciate that, thank you. Commissioner Allen, any questions?
Can we go back to the facade for the entrance?
This one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just because I don't know if I missed it or not. The difference between the upper and the lower was strictly a desire for aesthetics improvement? Is that what I gathered?
ADA, accessibility.
ADA. So you put the miniature elevator in there as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
So we're enclosing that space, there would be an entry area, and if you have that kind of entry area, you're going to have a receptionist there. It's some sort of check-in, some sort of security elevator, and then to the left is a monument stair, proposed.
Copy, thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Good, and stay with you for, any comments?
No more comments.
Okay, Commissioner Gant, comments? Commissioner Criss?
It's a visible corner, and it's great to see the investment to upgrade it and make it look nice. I think it's going to be a nice addition to that area of the city that could use a little bit of revitalization.
Agreed.
Yeah, yeah. Perfect. Commissioner Halverson, comments?
I think I've found my thing, because you've got, you've got golf carts. I think lighting is my thing.
(laughing).
That's okay.
I actually made a note.
Next smittle, provide lighting.
Yes. So, you know, it makes buildings kind of sing.
They really do.
Yeah, so it's really important, please consider it. I don't have any other comments other than that.
So I do have, I guess, a question, and it's kind of looking long-term. And as you mentioned, you know, the building has, may not have closed yet with the sale, and with NCR, you know, leasing a part of it. As far as you know, are there any long-term plans to revitalize the other portion of the property in the future? And the reason why is, you know, I'm looking at it, that this, this really, both aesthetically, as well as, and Commissioner Criss took my word, was revitalization. And this is something definitely that I've said multiple times, you know, over the couple, last couple of years, is, you know, it's not as much redevelopment, which to me looks at tearing it down and rebuilding it. But this is really taking existing structures, which we have quite a few in Peachtree City, that may need some revitalization, or properties that may need revitalization. So I'm just curious if there's been any discussions, you know, about continuing this for the rest of the building, the rest of the property.
The new ownership is very excited about the design, and have asked how we could apply this to a second phase.
Perfect.
That second phase is contingent on Phase 1 being.
Right.
Fit out.
Yep, understand, and whatever the lease agreement down the road is for, understand. And I know, you know, as Commissioner Criss said, you know, that is a very noticeable corner, right off of 74 South and Paschal Road. You know, looking forward to see, see a landscape design.
Yes.
Coming in, I think that could really be a, no better way to put it, a really beautiful, you know, kind of industrial-looking area, even though it's, it's going to be beautified with, you know, with some nice plants and trees and things. What, you know, what's there unfortunately is overgrown, you know, needs to be cut down and revitalized.
Yes.
So I'm looking forward to seeing that, you know, as we go forward.
And they would love to do, as we've indicated on that rendering, is pull back those overgrown trees and shrubberies that are there. Put stone on that retaining wall, upgrade that, and then work with the landscape architect to perfect it.
I think that will definitely set that corner off, most definitely. And I guess my only other comment is, is yes, I would make a suggestion to go with the alternate entrance. I think with what you're doing, especially on that front side, the bottom-left corner, you know, it matches up more to that, just from a look-wise, plus it gives, again, it gives another ADA-compliant entrance into it. So I would definitely love to be able to see that alternative design used, instead of just the steps, you know, going up. I think it's just, like I said, two reasons, just look as well as accessibility, so I think that's great. That's everything that I have. Any other comments, questions? No? Okay, with that, do we have a motion from the DIAS?
I'll move to approve the building elevation modifications for NCR at 200 Highway 74 South.
Do we want to put any suggestion as to the alternate entrance? Would we like to?
We could put a condition, with the condition that the alternate entrance be preferred, or be, you know? Is our preferred, with the notion?
I don't know that you want to lock them into it, since.
I think we would make a suggestion.
Yeah.
More so a condition, I think, make a suggestion for using the alternate.
Yeah, with the preference from, from the planning commission, that the alternate design should be selected, but doesn't have to be.
Okay, any other comments from the motion? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the building elevation modifications NCR 200 Highway 74 South with the suggestion of the, using the alternate entrance. And we have a second, any other comments, questions? No? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the building elevation modifications NCR 200 Highway 74 South is approved with the suggestion of the alternate entrance, and thank you very much. Let's see, we have no public hearings. Any member staff topics?
No, sir. I would like to speak about the next meetings.
Absolutely.
So, as you can see above you or before you, there is a scheduled meeting the week of Thanksgiving. Staff has identified that there could be quorum concerns, so we're asking to possibly not have that meeting, just to allow for there not to be any challenges. We wouldn't want to have someone scheduled for that and then later find out of changes.
And that is the week of Thanksgiving, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Yes, okay, so let's, let's just go ahead and ask availability?
We don't have any problem with it.
Mr. Chairman, I won't be here.
Okay, so we know we're already down one.
I won't be here.
We're down two, so, yeah, we're.
I'll be in town that day.
I'll be in town that day.
Yeah.
I think the two of them should have that meeting.
(laughing). Do we have, do we have topics?
We don't have any items as of now.
Okay.
But we wouldn't want to put anything on there and then change, because we wanted to bring it before you first.
Yeah, I would propose that we just move to cancel that meeting, because if we don't have any items at this time, it's unlikely that some will come in the next week, right? We have to have a certain amount of notice.
That's right, that's right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I think from coverage standpoint, from a quorum, I'm going to be available. We would at least have three, and I don't know if Kenneth is available or not, from that standpoint. But again, yeah, if we don't have any topics or items, I would go ahead and recommend canceling the November 24th.
So I don't know if your dates were adopted by you, or just, just to be on a safe side, can you just make a motion?
Sure, we absolutely can. Okay, so do we have a motion to cancel the November 24th planning commission meeting?
I will make a motion that we cancel the November 24th planning commission meeting due to a lack of participation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to cancel the November 24th meeting, as well as a second. Any other comments, questions? No? Okay, all those in favor of canceling the November 24th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting of November 24th canceled.
So your next meeting will be December 8th.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Criss.
Just, just really quickly, yeah, I won't be in attendance for the 8th.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll be here.
And I know we're then running into, if we would have the second meeting of the month on the 22nd, we're running into the week of Christmas. Do we need to address that now?
I would if I were you. That way we will know in advance.
Perfect. Okay, I would actually recommend that we go ahead and cancel the December 22nd meeting.
I would like to make a motion that we cancel the December 22nd meeting.
Second.
Of the planning commission due to the lack of participation.
So we have a motion to cancel the December 22nd, and a second. Anything else? No?
I really think you should be here on the 8th, I don't know what you think. (laughing).
So all those in favor of canceling the December 22nd, 2025 planning commission meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is canceled for December 22nd.
If you want to do any more, I'm getting good at this. (laughing).
One more identification of something. So, Sir Chairman, we have not had a UDO meeting in a while.
Yes.
So I would ask for the 8th, if we could allot time for that, if you're comfortable with that.
What are we looking at for agenda at this time for the 8th? Any ideas?
Nothing we have at this time, so, not to say it won't be, but I would love for there to be an opportunity to have discussions. I will share with you, if I can, that I have identified a few companies that we could reach out to, so ask for quotes. And I've shared that with the chairman of the committee. And I know he would like to speak at our next committee meeting on that item, so I would love to have the opportunity to do that, so we can continue to move this project forward.
I agree, and I think it's very important, since we haven't had one in a while, and especially since we're getting at the end of the year, to go ahead and do December 8th for that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else, staff?
No.
Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.